Thank you. Follow my own admonition there. At this time, I will call the November 25th, 2024 meeting of the Catawba County Board of Education to order. Momentarily, we will have a moment of silence. After the moment of silence, we will have the presentation of the colors by the Bunker Hill High School Air Force JROTC. And then upon posting the colors, I will lead in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if I could, please have everyone stand for a moment of silence. You may post the colors. Put me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'd like to introduce Major Ron Jones, who is the commander of the Air Force Junior ROTC unit at Bunker Hill High School. Major Jones, tell us about your cadets.
Thank you. Color guard, at ease. Good evening. I'm Major Ron Jones, commander for the Bunker Hill JRTC program. And I have four distinguished individuals, and actually I have one in the back, almost forgot you, sorry. These individuals have done some amazing things in just the last couple of months. I have cadets Jacob Houston, Dakota Martin, my apologies, Ruby Fox, and John Cook. So I've got two seniors and two seniors, one sophomore and one freshman, and also have cadet Samara Chavez in the back there. These individuals have been on the color guard, and they have recently done color guards, not just in our football games, but also in things like the Charlotte Hornets and the Charlotte Football Club. So they've had an experience in front of thousands of people at a time. These individuals are also academically in the top tier of their class, so I'm very proud of them. We have one individual who is currently looking at going into the into the Air Force, that would be Ruby Fox. So we're working with her. The others, we're still undecided at this point, but they're doing amazing things. So I cannot be prouder of these individuals. I truly believe I have the best students in the entire school. So I want to kind of give these guys a round of applause.
Thank you, Major Jones, and we appreciate you and the cadets being here this evening. Thank you. At this time, board members, you have all received a copy of the minutes of the October 28th, 2024 board meeting in your packet. I will entertain a motion to either approve those or amend those meetings.
Motion to approve as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Abernathy.
I'll second.
And seconded by Ms. Richards. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the minutes from October 28th, signify by raising your hand. Unanimous. At this time, I'll recognize Dr. Stover for the approval of our agenda for this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Taylor, members of the board. We are, everything is as is on the agenda. We do ask, at the end of closed session, we come out to open that we add an agenda item entitled Maiden Roof. So we'd like to put that at the end of tonight's agenda with your permission.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Stover, board, you've heard the request relative to the agenda. So I will entertain any motion to that effect or discussion about that.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the agenda with the adjustment that Dr. Stover mentioned.
Thank you, Dr. Abernathy.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Sigman. We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the agenda with the adjustment mentioned by Dr. Stover, signify by raising your hand. And again, that is unanimous. Thank you. This time, I would like to recognize Dr. Stover for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Taylor. Real quick, I just want to mention the Christmas cards in front of you. Those are the final winners. We had over 900 submissions of student artists across the district. The picture on the far right is actually a sixth grade drawing, which is absolutely phenomenal. The middle one is a high school student who just did a wonderful job. And then the middle one is one of our middle school, or pardon me, the one on the left is our middle school student. I got to meet with their families, and Debbie does a great job, and Kim putting cards together. They can send them to their loved ones. But these cards go to 115 school district elected officials and everything else. We're just really proud of our art teachers and our students, just amazing art. So I just wanted to point that out. Tonight, if you want to join me out front, we have four people we're recognizing tonight.
All right. Our first recognition this evening is a student from Bandys High School. You probably read about him in the Hickory Daily Record. Wyatt Jackson Spencer is our student at Bandys who went out of his way to help the Hurricane Helene victims. And so I want to read to you a letter that Dr. Maynor put together on behalf of his student to Governor Cooper to recognize his efforts. "On behalf of Bandys High School, I'm writing to nominate Wyatt Jackson Spencer, 16-year-old junior at Bandys High School, for Governor Cooper Student Excellence Award. Recently, following the devastation of Hurricane Helene in western North Carolina, Wyatt Spencer, who was also the junior class president of our student government association, traveled with the NC State Highway Patrol to various mountain regions devastated by Hurricane Helene. He was in McDowell, Watauga, and Mitchell, assisted with the disaster response efforts. According to the troopers he assisted, Wyatt has done a great job doing all the asking of him and in many areas that were lost and forever changed." Part of Wyatt's duties was being on a four-wheeler to go out and to find people who were missing. And so Wyatt, what an amazing, difficult opportunity to have, for sure. Also, too, he was able to put projects together back at school for the victims to raise dollars and clothing and those type of things that were much needed. He was also recognized at the time by governor-elect, or governor candidate, was going to come see him. Mr. Robinson wasn't able to make it, but he's been recognized across the state for this effort. I'm hoping that Governor Cooper or someone from his office will recognize you as well. With this letter that Dr. Maynor put together, I wouldn't doubt that he will. So thank you, Dr. Maynor. That being said, just another example of our students in Catawba County, not only with excellent grades, but excellent service to our fellow North Carolinians. Let's give him a huge round of applause. Great job. If you hadn't seen the Hickory Daily Record, it also had an amazing article, too. So, great job. All right. Tonight, we are celebrating three of our finest employees. We do have 2,300 of them, so tonight we'll just choose three. So the first one I want to recognize is our classified employee of the month. She is our custodian bus driver from Oxford Elementary. Lisa Frye is amazing. So just to tell you a little bit about Lisa, she drives her bus, she goes home, she comes back, cleans, she drives again, and in the middle, she's constantly giving of her own self, her own dollars and cents for her fifth and sixth grade students, for gifts, praying for them, just whatever it takes. Tonight, we want to thank Ms. Lisa Frye. Let's give her a big round of applause. Our second employee of the month is Ms. Stacy Miller, is our STEM teacher at Star Town Elementary. This is Ms. Miller's first year as the STEM teacher, maybe second year, but has been a classroom teacher at Star Town, just an amazing teacher. Most recently, they did the pumpkin challenge where they were tossing pumpkins through physics and all sorts of great science standards. We're just so thankful for Ms. Miller, her engaging activities for our students. A big round of applause for Ms. Stacy Miller. Last but not least, is our administrator of the month. Our administrator of the month is Mr. Murphy Post. He's our Lyle Creek principal. Last year, as you may have heard, the whole school has worked themselves out of that underperforming category that we know that they're not in anyhow. Because of his leadership, love of kids, and love of people, Lyle Creek is doing amazing things. I can remember a picture of Mr. Post at a blackout party for reading. Was it purple lights, wasn't it? He dances with kids, he reads with kids, but Mr. Post is exactly what our students and staff need at Lyle Creek. Let's give him a big round of applause. And he's taller than me, too.
I've got to be in the middle.
There you go.
As long as I see your faces, we're good.
Yep, we're good. Thank y'all.
Again, thank you. And Wyatt, before you leave, I'd just like to say a word. I know a lot of times, it's fashionable in some circles for people to talk about kids today. And when I hear them say that, I'm quick to stop them and say, how many kids today are you really around? You can't judge the whole population by the few that maybe live on your street and skateboard up and down your driveway. We have amazing young people in this county, and Wyatt, you're just representative of the very best of those, and we're proud of you, and thank you so much for all that you did. And the completion of the superintendent's report brings us to public comment, and I will turn this over to our attorney, Crystal Davis.
Lynn Dorfman, do you still need us to spell it? I finally learned to spell my name. Okay. This is Thanksgiving week, and I came to talk about Thanksgiving and what I'm thankful for. Your slogans are engage, inspire, empower, and making education better, and those are just words on a website possibly, unless you're really committed to improving lives of students and making things better for staff. I'm here to express my thanksgiving for the outgoing board members, Mr. Ron Abernathy, Ms. Annette Richards, and Chair Jeff Taylor. I'm very thankful for you, for your service, and I wanted to say so publicly. Thank you.
Thank you. Seems like a good theme for the evening. Catawba County Schools is definitely the best place I have ever worked, and I don't have much longer, but I'm still very glad to be working here. And I, too, want to give my thanks to Mr. Abernathy, to Ms. Richards, and to Mr. Taylor for the years of service that you've given to Catawba County, for what you've done for teachers, for students, for the county overall. I know all three of you had to endure some ugliness in this latest campaign, and I am so sorry for that, but I thank you for your willingness to get up here and to serve and to put up with what you had to put up with and to make this a place that I enjoy working and that I plan to continue to enjoy working for a year and a half and a month. Thank all three of you. Oh, and thank you, Mr. Miller, who came out and helped with Quiz Bowl last week. We could not have done it without your assistance. Thank you.
I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I'm just here to thank you all, too. Jeff Taylor, Ms. Richards, and Mr. Abernathy, we appreciate the kindness and respect that you've shown everybody during the last couple of years, when it's been somewhat contentious in here at times, and that you've shown grace. And particularly want to thank you for trusting the process and for trusting the professionals that actually do the jobs of choosing the books that go into our libraries. They are, after all, as far as I know, they all have to have a master's in library science. They do know what they're doing, and I appreciate you trusting them and all the work that you do for the schools. I'm very sorry for the outcome of the elections. I feel like you all have perhaps some things that were not kindly said about you that shouldn't have been, but can't control other people. So just want to thank you once again for all your hard work, and that we do appreciate that you have put so much effort into it, and just appreciate you. Thank you.
My name is Kevin Sparks. I have a few facts and then a request. The books that have been considered in this room for removal are high school books. They were held in high school libraries. The books, according to the laws followed by this board and according to Supreme Court rulings, are neither obscene nor pornographic. Review committees acknowledge that in each case. The Catawba Freedom Readers have uniformly respected the recommendations of review committees. In a few cases, those committees judged that books should be held only in high school libraries, not in middle school. So be it, we say. Committees are made up of professionals and serious people. We respect that. About 90% of the parents in the school district indicated that they should be in control of what their children read. The parents should be in control. Nonetheless, a few board members who have sided with the candidate for public office who described himself as a Nazi have elected to oppose committee rulings and remove certain books. Harm has been done as a result. Books have been banned that our students have a right to access freely. Authors have been denied the right to address an important part of their audience. Ideas that some consider dangerous have been systematically removed from our libraries, and groups such as the Catawba Freedom Readers have had to reallocate resources away from other activities to oppose the measures implemented by a frightened few. Measures that have served more as political fodder, used to falsely portray opponents as preying upon children. Harm has been done to the staff of this beleaguered school district. In the face of the harm that has been done, I have a simple, urgent request. Undo the harm. All it takes is a motion from a member of this board. I ask that you reverse the decisions to remove or restrict these books here tonight. Replace them on library shelves and remove restrictions upon them. I beseech you to take this simple step. I urge you, I implore you. Thank you for your consideration.
Good evening, board, and want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. I want to take a moment to express the gratitude I have for what I got to experience two weeks ago, visiting four schools here in Catawba County. And I am somewhat biased, because two of the schools we went to were our daughters, Go Fred T. Ford and Challenger High School. And the other two schools were Van Oak and Mountain View. And as this board starts a new chapter, how I compare those two and connect those two is the vision that I see is the hard work and commitment that I saw from every staff member, from Fred T. Ford and their wood shopping class to Mountain View Elementary School. The commitment and dedication that I see from the staff is unprecedented. And the vision that this board must take forward is the focus must remain on academics, and that commitment must be stronger than ever. But the board must rise to the occasion and show leadership and build partnerships with all the players in place, whether it's our state legislature, our county commissioners, looking at different ways on how we bring those people and show them how great public education is, the investments that we need to make. The board will have to work hard to make those a commitment. But I want the children of this school system to continue to be able to think for themselves and not be taught what to think. And I think the focus has got to remain on education, and I'm very appreciative of the hard work and dedication that I have saw over the last three years. And I think this board realizes the challenges that are ahead and that God places people in places at certain times, and things happen in ways that we cannot understand or grasp. But I think this board will rise to the occasion and display how great this school system is and that it'll be the best of the best in North Carolina. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, and that is the consent items. And Dr. Stover, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Chairman Taylor, members of the board. In front of you, we do have our consent items that we are requesting approval tonight.
Board, you have those in your packet, and you see them listed on the agenda tonight. I'll entertain a motion or any comments relative to the consent items.
Motion to approve the consent items as presented to us.
Thank you, Mr. Abernathy.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sattlemeyer. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of consent items as listed, please signify by raising your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. That brings us to our unfinished business, and that will recognize Dan Moore for construction updates.
Thank you, Chairman Taylor, members of the board. We've got a few slides here for our construction project at Maiden E., which we'll be able to officially have our ribbon cutting tomorrow at 4:00, and we want to invite the public to attend as well. But in these couple of photographs, you see a lot of changes there within the cafeteria space. It's really working well. We're really pleased. Our next couple of slides are going to be kitchen equipment necessary for the function of that cafeteria, and I know the staff there is happy not to be transporting meals from the old kitchen down the hill to the new school. Another slide there. And one more, I think, Marty. Nice and new and neat and clean, and we're very excited. And the last photograph, the last couple photographs show the flooring installation at the, in the gym and also the stage area with the new curtains. It's just a beautiful facility, and we're going to really enjoy it for years to come and look forward to the ribbon cutting tomorrow. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Moore, thank you. I was looking back through some photographs in my phone, and I came across the groundbreaking photograph from September 2022, which doesn't seem like it's been two years ago, but I'm sure that you feel like it's been that and more.
Yeah.
But thank you.
It's been a lot of fun.
Thank you for the Thank you for the job that you've done here at Maiden, and also just on the incredible job that you and all the folks that work under you in operations do on a regular basis. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item number two on our unfinished business is the update on the proposed attorney evaluation instrument. And when we last left this, there were a couple of items that were needed to be tweaked based on recommendations from the State School Boards Association. So, Dr. Barnett, do you have an update on that?
Mr. Chairman, I do. There, before you, they are in our electronic files, and we were asked to clarify items 1.01, 1.03, and 1.06. And Mr. Abernathy and I have worked on those, and with some input from the North Carolina School Boards Association, we think we've clarified what we're talking about in those three items. And they're before you on the items you can see.
And is that instrument now one that we are ready to consider?
Yes. In fact, I need to mention also that thanks to Ms. Wetzel, we did also add the place at the end of each section for comments. And the rating is there, the rating is explained, and so thanks to Ms. Wetzel for making that a more usable instrument. I would like to go ahead and make the motion that we accept it as an instrument to use in the future.
Okay, there is a motion on the floor.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion on this? I know there's been a good deal of work put in. I know Mr. Settlemeyer, Mr. Abernathy, and Mr. Barnett did most of the heavy lifting early, and we got the input from the School Boards Association. Any discussion? And this instrument, if approved, would be the instrument going forward that the board would use if it so chooses in the evaluation of the school board attorney under conditions that they would determine at that time. So there's a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I will call the question. All those in favor of approval of this instrument as prepared, signify by raising your hand. And that is a unanimous vote. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Barnett, Mr. Abernathy, and Mr. Settlemeyer for your work on that. To my knowledge, we are the first LEA in North Carolina to develop such an instrument. Am I correct?
For, in our situation where we have an in-house attorney, although this doesn't apply at this point, it's, we could not locate one.
Right. And I also think that's what information I was given by staff at the School Boards Association as well. So thank you all for that, that job. That brings us to our new business section, and next on the agenda is Mr. J.R. Sigmund, who will seek approval of collaboration with Kataba County Partnership for Children and Kataba County Early Head Start. Miller?
Yes, not J.R. Sigmund. Sorry to disappoint. J.R.
I was just reading it off the list. My apologies.
You're exactly right. He is on the agenda, but I am standing in for Mr. Sigmund tonight to ask the board for approval of the Kataba County Partnership for Children and the Kataba County Schools' Early Head Start. You can see there in your documents that Early Head Start, they're asking for $10,000 for marketing and recruitment, some corporate sponsorship for the 21st anniversary celebration, the Kids Ready Programs, the $10,000 expense for consultative services for Dr. Gail Summer. We've used her for a number of years for training. The diaper nest is for supplies, $10,000. Family Services was $2,500 in gift cards for our families of Early Head Start, and $5,849 for Triple P Parenting Adult Mental Health Training for parents and staff as well. Early childhood support, $14,000, $10,000 for mental health services for our Early Head Start families and children. Yeah, I think this is something that we have done annually over the last number of years. I hate to try to guess how many. I don't think this is anything new. We're just seeking approval from the board.
Mr. Miller, remind us, what, the funding source for this approval? All right, so that is out of that budget? Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Mr. Miller is seeking approval for this partnership. I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve this collaboration as it's been presented for the Kataba County Partnership for Children with our Early Head Start program.
Thank you, Dr. Barnett. A second. Thank you, Mr. Settlemeyer. There's a motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of the collaboration with Kataba County Partnership for Children and Kataba County Early Head Start, signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous. Thank you, board.
Thank you.
And now, Ms. Carla Aldridge will present for adoption the 2024-2025 budget resolution.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board and Dr. Stover, tonight, I respectfully request that you approve our 24-25 budget. It is in the amount of $223,84,621.35.
And again, the information relative to this was in the packet, and Ms. Aldridge and her staff have done a great job putting this budget proposal together. So she is seeking adoption, and I will entertain motion to that effect.
I make a motion that we accept as presented. A second.
There's a motion and second on the floor. Any discussion or questions about the budget proposal as presented? Hearing none. All in favor of adoption of the 2024-2025 budget resolution, signify by raising your hand. Again, that is unanimous. Thank you, board, and thank you, Ms. Aldridge.
Mr. Chair, I would like to say that, Ms. Aldridge, we appreciate everything that you've done for Kataba County Schools. We've been truly blessed to have you manage our finances and make sure we're doing what we're supposed to and putting things where they need to be, and you're dearly going to be missed.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure.
Thank you, Carla.
I was gonna, I was gonna say, I saw that smile. That was her last budget presentation and approval. Ms. Carla, we're gonna miss you. One more, though. Well, we got one more. We can do it.
And I was discussing with Ms. Aldridge before the meeting began about retirement, and she's got another endeavor she'll be going into, and she goes, you've done that kind of thing. What's the, what's the best thing about it? And I said, the 25th of the month. So thank you, Ms. Aldridge. All right, at this time, I'll recognize Crystal Davis for approval of proposed amendments to the Kataba County Board of Education policies.
So three of these policies, one, two, two of these policies are tying up the loose ends related to, excuse me, I forgot something. Related to changes regarding sexual harassment and Title IX. However, these, as you recall, don't relate to Title IX, which is why I removed them from the previous meeting so that you could clearly see how they apply. So the first policy that, that you have is a deletion of Policy 1.7100, which is the old prohibition against discrimination, harassment, and bullying. That was required by state law and was used, you know, under a lot of circumstances. It applies to everybody in the school system. It applies to employees, it applies to students. And so it's, but it's required by state law. But regardless, we deleted that policy, 1.7100, because the other policy or the new policy has combined both the prohibition of discrimination, harassment, and bullying and the complaint procedures and reporting process into one policy, which I like so much better. Although it's reworded, it's substantially the same, and it's straight out of North Carolina general statutes and what that requires. So any questions about the deletion of 1.7100 and then the amendment of 1.7200, 4.3501, 7.1512? I will add that to distinguish from the Title IX, I've put in parentheses, including North Carolina state law, so that we'll know this one is, is the state, our state law requirement does not relate to Title IX. So something could conceivably violate state law but not rise to the level of Title IX violation. Okay, any questions about that one? All right, the next grouping, I'm gonna take, even though we, I've got them in chronological order, I'm gonna take number three, under new business, number three, item number three, five, and six as one. And I may want to, I'm gonna explain the purpose of this, and Ms. Aldridge, you might have to, this is about conflicts of interest. So we, I wanted to make absolutely clear because we have had some challenges over the years, and finance has also faced these challenges with a lack of understanding by employees that you cannot engage in conflicts of interest with when it relates to your employment as far as your spouses and your family members. So we wanted to make it, I talked with Ms. Aldridge, finance, some of the people in finance, about making this absolutely clear. Although it's clear in statutes at times, and it's clear in, in case law, we wanted to make it very clear that a conflict of interest can occur when an employee, his or her spouse, or a member of his or her immediate family derives benefits as defined in the policies from engaging in business with the school system. And then specifically defining what immediate family is, and that would include a spouse, a parent, child, brother, sister, grandparent, or grandchild, including step, half, and in-law relationships. And that is a standard definition throughout case law and throughout, actually, some federal laws as well. So, so these three policies simply make that absolutely clear, the changes in these policies simply make that absolutely clear and drives it home. But I wanted to address them because these are the three policies we have relating to conflicts of interest. Any questions about that? Now, there are exceptions, I will tell you, as far as, for example, the superintendent, it's in the body of the, the actual conflict of interest. For example, with regard to your spouse, there's a statutory exception for the superintendent to be able to recommend to the board his spouse for employment. That's in statute. So I wanted to let you know that because that is a contract.
Don't like to break the law in our family. Thank you, Crystal.
Yeah, sorry about that. Wanted to make sure it's clear, you're not engaging in that. All right, so the final policy is actually listed as number four on there, and this relates to Dr. Eisenhower's proposal of the, regarding the bylaws for the Career Technical Education Business Advisory Council. And I simply wanted to make sure that this policy was amended to make sure that the Kataba County Career Technical Education Joint Advisory Council, although it is an advisory committee to the board, that it is also governed by its own bylaws. So I put that in the body of this policy. This is the first time we've had that, so I wanted to make that clear. It's sort of a cross-reference. So that's the only change there. And then I will let Dr. Eisenhower say what he will about my proposed changes to, to the bylaws. You okay? You ready? Okay.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
The committee you just referenced, to CTE, that, like, an ad hoc committee, that's not a regular committee of the board.
It, it, it is now. It is now. It's, it's going to be, it's required by statute to have a set of bylaws and to convene, and I think y'all are, you can meet more than twice, but at a minimum of twice a year, correct?
Is this the only committee under the?
Yes, that's why I made it clear that it's governed by its own set of bylaws.
Thank you.
Yep.
And if I remember correctly, I think, Mr. or Dr. Eisenhower, that it specifies who that is. I think it's the board chair and the superintendent from each of the districts, isn't it?
If y'all ever want a copy, this is actually.
We looked at it, I think, last month.
Yeah, it's actually set straight out in statute. So it's, there's no, the only thing that got a little bit unclear was the procedures we would follow, and I just cleaned that up and made it so that it's consistent with, with our board policy. That's, that was my proposed changes. So it's really, were really technical matters that the statute didn't necessarily address. I think they were assumed, but, you know, to me, it would be much easier if all the laws were in one, one place with regard to each issue, but unfortunately, they're not. You've got to hunt around and find them. So that's why I tried to put them all in one place here.
This may not make a difference. My number six, labeled number six, is actually board committees. And Ron's is as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was looking at the expansion. I'm sorry.
I didn't know if that made a difference or not.
It, it does. If you'll just, I was doing it for your reference. No. Thank you, but I was looking at what Debbie printed out.
You covered all the relevant policies. You just did them.
They're all in here, but the numbers are kind of.
I'm sorry.
Tumbling around. I didn't know if that made a difference when we approved them.
Yeah, it doesn't. You can just, if you have no issues, you can make a motion to approve all of them, the changes to all of them. Any questions about that?
One, one information, two superintendents, both on that, and both CPs, president of community college, principals, a principal from each school district, and it says a minimum of five district representatives. Top 10 schools will have four representatives, and it's kind of one of that, four, four cannot see fifteen members.
All that's set up in statute. And that's, do you want to ask? Yeah. Oh, first you got to have.
We got it. All right, so, Ms. Davis, thank you for presentation of these proposed amendments to board policies. Is there a motion relative to her request for approval?
Motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Abernathy, second by Dr. Barnett. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the proposed amendments to Kataba County Board Policies as presented by Ms. Davis, signify by raising your hand. And board, thank you. That is unanimous vote. Ms. Wetzel? And now, Dr. Eisenhower, you are up.
Mr. Chairman, thank you very much, members of the board. So from the work session earlier in the month, we come back to ask approval of the bylaws for forming the Joint Career and Technical Education Business Advisory Council with New Conover City Schools. Only minor changes to this, which you should have received from Madam Attorney on this, are those items in red at the very end of the policy, or the bylaws, rather. Could you scroll to that, please? Can I scroll? Why don't you do it? Marty, to the very end, if you would, please. Yes, sir. Is the, can we get the, is there, this is not the new document, is it? Ah, there we go. Thank you. So the, those changes there are minor, one addresses. Ah, there we go. Thank you. So those changes there are minor, one addresses the core piece Just a little bit. There we go. Which that bullet there, voting members are defined as those who are elected or appointed excluding ex officio members and excluding the CTE director serving as non-voting members. A few minor changes and additions there in rhetoric to the archives and holding the minutes of the meeting, and then some changes with voting members in accordance with Robert's rules of order. And then down at the very bottom, the addressing of the fact that this falls under public meetings laws, and Madam Attorney has referenced our Board of Education policy, which she just talked about. So other than that, there are no changes at all from the last work session that you had. So tonight, we just come and ask approval of these bylaws so that we can begin rolling with this process with the other district. And as I said before, all three CTE directors meet once a month in this district at a minimum, and we also meet with K-64 as part of that process. So we're all in partnership, seeking the same prize at the end of the day, which is connecting young people to workforce. And I will say, from a partnership standpoint and talking with other folks across the state, and I know Dr. Stover would second me on this, I mean, from a district working standpoint, the three of us work as well together as anybody in the entire country on the goals of the Career and Technical Education Program.
Thank you, Dr. Eisenhower, and especially the, I think it's important always the emphasis on open meeting laws and being congruent with that statute. So thank you for that. You have heard Dr. Eisenhower's proposal, and he is seeking approval of that. So at this time, I will entertain any motions relative to that.
I just had a quick question.
Yes, sir.
Below the nomination selection notification of members, the initial terms in the section D says January 1, 2018. Is that from the current? Guess y'all have a current board already and we're just-
We do, and that's a great question, Mr. Sattlemeyer. We are a little bit behind. We've got to, we need to have a meeting with both current boards and then make a decision on who we're going to bring back to you guys for that first recommendation on individuals. And if you have individuals that you'd like to serve on that, I mean, we're, we serve, the way these are written, the first approval comes from you folks. As a question to the board, or a statement to the board, we would like to ask some of those members who have currently served to see if they want to continue to serve in that capacity, because we were talking about some major industry leaders in the area here. But we'll do whatever your wishes are.
I seen the second page, it says January 1, 2025, so that's the section that will be included in?
Yes.
Okay.
We're a little bit behind. We need to-
To borrow a phrase, it's the same but different.
It is.
Good question, and thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions?
Just wanted to make sure I understood, Newton Conover will also approve these same bylaws.
They have already approved these bylaws.
They've approved, okay, thank you.
And look at this language to see if they just want to, this portion, in my opinion, is miniscule compared to the general statute piece of how the 15 members and how this works. We're required to have an advisory council regardless. We're just bringing the two of us together because we're using, actually, we're wearing out some of the same industry members on our committees.
Good point. Okay, I will entertain a motion relative to Dr. Eisenhower's presentation.
I make the motion, we approve Dr. Eisenhower's presentation.
Second, sorry.
I think Ms. Richards nipped her at the tape on that one. So second, Ms. Richards, motion by Mr. Sattlemeyer. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All members signify by raising your hand if you are in favor of this presentation, and that is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, members of the board.
And Mr. Miller is back up, seeking approval of school improvement plans for Oxford Elementary, Riverbend Middle School, St. Stevens Elementary School, and Webb A. Murray Elementary School.
Yes, thank you, Chairman Taylor. If you recall, last month in the work session, all of our schools presented improvement plans. The board approved all but four because by state law, we have to present those plans to you for low performing schools. We have to then give a 30-day period for feedback, and then bring those plans back to the board for those low performing schools. So tonight, coming to ask for your approval of those school improvement plans for Oxford, for Murray, St. Stevens Elementary, and Riverbend Middle School. We did not receive any public feedback in the 30 days that those proposed plans were posted online. And you've had those plans, I think, in your packet. Again, they're presented to you last month. I'll be glad to go back and answer any questions about those plans. I do know Mr. Sattlemeyer had a question in October about a date on Riverbend's plan, and that was intentional in 2026, because they felt like to reach that particular goal, I think there were two actually in 2026, that they would prefer to do that two years out rather than one, because they felt like it was lengthy and it would require some time. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, for that presentation and the update on it, or reminder, we saw these in the previous month. Any questions before we call the question? All those in favor of, well, excuse me, motion?
Make a motion, I'm sorry, I make a motion, we approve the school improvement plans for Webb, Murray, Oxford, St. Stevens Elementary, and Riverbend School.
Thank you, Mr. Sattlemeyer. About to get the cart in front of the horse there, so appreciate that. Second.
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Sigmund. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approval of these school improvement plans for the four schools, please signify by raising your hand. And again, unanimous, Ms. Wetzel.
Thank you, board. The second thing I would like to seek your approval on tonight is the arts endorsement for our current seniors. We brought this to you at the work session in October as well, just kind of as an informational piece. We're back tonight to ask for your approval. The state statute says the local school board must approve the activities that can be counted towards the arts endorsement. If you recall, a student can take four art courses, and they have to have a B average or higher in each of those courses, and complete 40 hours of extracurricular activity in the arts, and it can't be for a grade, and it can't be paid. So we asked our teachers to come up with a list of potential activities that they can get those 40 hours in, and that's the list that you have in your packet that we're asking for your approval of. The actual approval of the endorsement will be done by the principal, but the state statute requires the board to approve the list of activities.
If I look at this, are there three different tracks they can have this in?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Have to have a B average in these classes or all?
So they have to have four classes, four arts classes, it can be a variety of music, visual art, theater, as long as they have a B in each of the four classes, then they would be eligible, assuming they completed the hours as well.
Any other questions? Thank you for this update and the seeking approval, Mr. Miller. I will entertain motions on this request.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve this list of activities for the arts proficiency diploma endorsement as presented by Mr. Miller.
Thank you. Dr. Barnett?
My second.
And thank you, Mr. Sattlemeyer. Any further questions? All in favor of approval of the arts proficiency diploma endorsement guidelines for Catawba County schools signify by raising your hand. That is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, board.
And now, Ms. Ray Thompson has information on school calendar options.
Yes, sir. Good evening. Last month, at the work session, you all asked me to bring a variety of calendars, and so I did. You have a whole bunch of things. And the thing to remember about these six options is that they, we was not calendar committee. I sat down with my pencil and looked at the days and the rules to try and figure out what could be, and also brought you an option that Durham County uses for their year-round calendar, just so that you could see that as well. Did you do that, or did I do that?
I did.
Okay. Nope, you're good. Just as a reminder, you've got the calendar law there in front of you. For our traditional calendar law, we have to have 215 days in the calendar for teachers, and they work no more than 195 of those. The rest of those are annual leave holiday days. Students should have 185 student days or a minimum of 1,025 hours covering nine calendar months. Teachers receive 10 annual leave days, 11 legal holidays, and at least two protective workdays, two optional workdays. And they have many more than that in all these calendars. No worries. The current calendar law says that we cannot start students in school any earlier than the Monday closest to August 26, which would be August 25 this year. And we have to end no later than the Friday closest to June the 11th. You also have the remote instruction law, and in remote instruction, because we don't receive a weather waiver for snow, ice, those kind of things, we are limited to five instructional days delivered remotely that are tied to inclement weather or power outages at the school, those types of things. So what I have for you is first, our current, our current calendar, what that would look like. So as you see that, that is number one in your packet. There are 165 days in the calendar for high school, 162 days in the current model calendar for next year for elementary and middle school, because they have the three elementary middle-only workdays, to bring us to 1,071.5 hours. So that starts us with two weeks of teacher workdays, students coming in on the 25th, and as we scroll through there, students end on May the 22nd, and then we have two weeks of teacher workdays there at the end. So it's exactly what we're doing right now, and I just put the workdays throughout the year to kind of mirror what we have this year.
I thought you had said that we wouldn't need the middle, the elementary middle days both, because the elementary were the ones that needed it for training, and the middle school people were basically done with that.
Well, we can make whatever arrangement you all tell me to make. I'm not sure where they are exactly with the middle school training, literacy training piece at this point. So that could be an easy one to flip back to elementary only. All right, the second calendar, Marty, yeah, tell me how to get back there, Marty. Okay. So the second calendar is actually the early start calendar. So students would start on August the 18th. That would give us five more days in that first semester, and bring our total student days at the high school and potentially middle school to 171, and the elementary at 168, and give us 1,111 hours for inclement weather issues. We would still end in May, but our workdays would, we would only have four workdays at the end of the school year, rather than the nine we currently have, because we would start a week earlier with optional teacher workdays in August. So that's what that looks like. Many of the systems around us have gone to the early start. At this point, there's not been a financial burden put on systems that have started early. There are two systems in the state that parents, local businesses threatened to lawsuit. Those were both on the coast, and they went back to the August 26 start for the school year. Thoughts about, thoughts about this one?
I mean, I like it. We had the hurricane come through this year, and that basically erased a week.
Yes, sir.
Learning for our district, which started a week earlier this year, and in hindsight, that'd have been great. We'd like to have those days back, I think.
Yes, absolutely.
Also comes closer to balancing your semesters, right?
Yes, sir, because that calendar, first semester is 82 days, second semester is 89, so it's still a little bit longer second semester, but it's closer than the 77, 88 split we have with our current calendar. All right, so the next calendar goes to the 175-day calendar. I didn't do the 180, went 175. So this starts us still on August the 25th, and it takes us into exams in January. We start second semester January 22nd, and would end second semester on June the 5th. That gives us a balanced semester, 88 to 87. 175 days at the high school and 1,136.5 instructional hours for students. So students get a lot more instruction. There are some bonuses to that. There are also some difficulties with this calendar. Community college starts earlier in January, so we would have kids finishing up first semester and trying to start at CBCC with their college courses before they have had their exams for first semester. So it does, does bring a little bit of give and take there. All right, ready for the next one? There we go. So then you also asked me to just take a look at the four-day week. So four-day week for students giving teachers Friday to be able to work on their stuff. The trick with this is trying to get the number of hours that students need. So on the 175-day, where we have extend second, first semester into January, going every other Friday as a virtual day or as a planning day for teachers, we end up with 1,084.5 hours. And you can see, I've kind of sprinkled those, they're in the yellow there. Oh, I'm sorry. Number five, yes. Sorry, 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 Debbie. So Mr. Miller and I talked a little bit about virtual instruction on those Fridays, and in the COVID, those days, we looked at trying to get four hours of- And in the past, in COVID, those days, we looked at trying to get four hours of instruction in for students. Trying to balance what that looks like with planning time for teachers. We might be able to pick up some additional hours, but it still would, we would have to delineate exactly how many hours of instruction they would need to do.
So I guess this may be for Dr. Stover, but would we be able to supply lunches on those days that are virtual?
No, unless we did like a community feeding at one of the schools in the feeder. That would be the only way.
I think Marty had said that we had parents sometimes pulling up to the schools to get close enough to wifi out in some of our outlying areas. Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay. And Marty, let's go back to the... No, you're good. So the, what that would look like on our current planning model would not give us nearly the hours that we would need to be able to meet the letter of the law. So just with not including virtual instruction, we would only have 981.5 hours of face-to-face instruction. So that one becomes even a little more difficult. But again, it's every other Friday. So it's laid out so that you can see it there. All right. And then last one. Durham Public Schools has a year-round calendar. That's calendar number six. And the year-round calendar is specific in that students should have three weeks off between periods of instruction. So in Durham, they start instruction on the 21st of July. And students roll through the first nine weeks until September 22nd. And they have a three-week period off there. And then come back in October and then have that additional break there in December. And then the same from January to March. And then they end school on the 12th of June. And so then they get their summer break at that point and then come back in July. So that, and Durham is so large that they run tracks. So they have a year-round school and a traditional school running in the same school building at the same time. So it's very, it's a complicated schedule. But I pulled just the year-round so that you could kind of take a look at that and see what that looked like. I did talk with our teacher leadership council about all the different options. And they were, they were very vocal about, no, we cannot have, cannot have exams in January. That totally messes up our high school students' time at CBCC. But they were also very vocal about the four-day-a-week calendar, because they felt like for lower elementary, K-3, that's not a great piece for them as they are working through all of their reading skills. So just keeping that in mind from their viewpoint was not, not the best fit for lower elementary. So what direction...
I would agree with that. And I think, you know, a lot of times our schools are a place where kids can come and get fed.
Yes, sir.
And they get loved. And some of them get that at home. So that, losing that day a week kind of worries me that those opportunities there as well.
Yes, sir.
I agree with Mr. Sattlemeyer. I've heard it said that for far too many of our students, the seven hours they spend at school are the best seven hours of their day. And yeah, I mean, I know that there are, especially in higher grades, some ways that my four-day might work, but I don't like it for the younger. But it's worth... So where are we? You've laid the options out. So what's the timetable, Ms. Thompson?
Yes, sir. So what I'm looking for from you tonight is just direction as to which way you want me to go. And then I will pull together the calendar committee to pull, pull a couple of options for you to flesh out completely. And I know that Newton has already set and presented their draft calendar in October. And it is our current calendar, though, starting August 25th and ending at Memorial Day. And so I will get with John. And then Hickory's not started theirs yet. Talked to Tim Sims last week and they have not even thought about it yet. So we'll get together and make sure we are aligning on workdays as much as we can.
I appreciate the time that you put into the four days. So at least the teachers do know that we did look at it.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Right out to whether we could do it or not.
Yes, ma'am.
So is there a direction from the board for which way Ms. Thompson and her committee need to proceed in the options that they should focus on there? Maybe it down from six to two or three?
I like the calendar starting on the 18th. Had a lot of storms in the past and I think they're getting worse. Help us keep those days.
Okay. I agree with Tim on that. As far as the calendar for the 18th, I think that would be a good option.
Good option two is the one... And Michelle, you're speaking of the same one that Tim is.
Yes.
And that is just make sure that is exams before Christmas, before they get out.
Yes, sir.
Because I wanted to add, and I appreciate the comment, you know, about the comments that were made about the CBCC issue. But I'd also like to speak for a lot of the other people out there that were not wanting to do exams after Christmas that had nothing to do with the CBCC thing. Just be able to get them over with and enjoy Christmas.
Yes, sir.
I think Ms. Thompson also, I certainly like that one that starts on the 18th and all it offers. I think we should also continue to look though at our, at our current one, because our board has always taken the stance that we're not willing to go against state statute as far as the starting date. I mean, that, that could change, but I think we should continue to look at that one for that reason.
Okay. I can work up both drafts with the committee and solidify the, solidify those drafts and bring them back to you in January.
But for clarification, then that would be options one and two.
Yes, sir. Options one and two.
Any other questions for Ms. Thompson? And I'll echo what Ms. Richards said. Thank you so much. I know this is an arduous process and I think maybe the most options I've ever seen presented in the first go-round. So job well done.
Thank you, sir.
We are now up to Mr. Marty Sharp, who is approaching the podium for items eight and nine. First one being approval of a one-year renewal invoice for learning.com for digital learning literacy subscriptions. Excuse me.
All right. Board chair, vice chair members of the board. I've come in front of you today for two different asks for approvals. The first one is a service that we've actually been using for a little over a year named learning.com. This service is all about teaching digital literacy for our students in grades K through eight. It also provides other, other services such as keyboarding, which is something that is really not taught in elementary, middle that much. So it does give our kids the opportunity to take keyboarding classes as well within the program. This is actually paid for through the state of North Carolina. They've already committed another year for us at a $60,000 price point. Just to give you a little insight, they're doing this for all Tier One and Tier Two counties. And we now, as of last year, we did qualify for this program. Learning.com as being a Tier Two. So come in front of you to ask for approval. Any questions? And you'll, you will see the participating schools and they are all K-8.
All right, you've heard the request from Mr. Sharp on approval of the one-year renewal invoice for learning.com for our digital literacy subscriptions. Are there any questions? Hearing none, I'll entertain motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we approve the one-year renewal invoice for learning.com for digital literacy.
A second.
Thank you, Dr. Barnett and Ms. Teague on the second. Any further discussion?
Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the one-year renewal invoice for learning.com for digital literacy subscription, signify by raising your hand. And that is unanimous.
All right, so the second request I come in front of you today is more of a hardware request. There's a lot of documents within that we've provided you, a lot of technical jargon, possibly. I'm going to try to cut it down into about a two-hour presentation, if that's possible. All right, I'm just kidding. You don't, yeah, you don't, you don't need me speaking two hours on this.
I moved the table that until January.
So, so this is a request for a replacement of what we deem our data core, which is the, really the core of our network for the entire district. You hear, you hear it called data centers. We do have a data center with multiple other servers, but this is really about the core. This is what we kind of determined as the heartbeat of our system within technology. It provides pretty much our business class processes, anywhere between finance to HR, all the way through our wireless network. We are currently about, I can't remember, but only a few months left in our current warranty, left on our equipment. We have had our multiple servers and storage data for a little over, right at five years, I believe. And so it's getting ready to become end of life in technology. So it's actually older than me in technology years. It is, we're starting to see a wear and tear, starting to see some issues with, specifically with what they call DNS, which is kind of a lookup service when you type in a URL and it's slow or it may, it may say cannot be found. It's doing a lookup within our DNS servers, which is actually part of this core. We're starting to see these kind of odd issues. And we felt like this is a really good time to come in front of the board and ask to replace. And vendors are telling us right now they're expecting prices to actually go up within the next few months. So we, we'd like to try to put this in front of the board and ask. You will notice, I promise it wasn't supposed to be two hours. The very first thing I want you to, to notice is this is actually on state contract through NC Dit. And it, it links 204X, it links to the actual contract that this company is from. Dell does no, does not any longer do direct service or direct purchase through Dell. So we have to use this vendor. And again, it is on the state contract. It is for two servers. You see the cost of the two servers here. And also for a storage server. Now, I will say, over the past few years, we've been trying to condense a lot of our storage. We have been migrating a lot of storage to the cloud through OneDrive. Makes it a lot easier on us, a lot cheaper. If I were to come in front of you last year before we did this, we would probably be looking at a little over 200,000 to replace. So we've been able to condense what we could condense. And so I will say, give Mike Brown a shout out as well. He was able to get this, I believe it was 135,000, a little over that. And he was able to negotiate with them to get it down to 103 before tax. I tried to make it short and sweet. Any questions you might have?
If you consider all of the data that our servers hold, all the emails with 1,600 staff, the 16,000 students, all the programs we run, it is amazing. And quite frankly, I, when I looked at that, I figured, you know, before I flipped to the back page in the final one, I was actually pleasantly surprised it wasn't any higher than that.
And I will say, even at this price, this is enterprise-grade equipment. This is not something that, you know, we're going to go to Best Buy to pick up for home use. This is enterprise-grade. We are considered enterprise in everything that we do with the scale, as Mr. Taylor alluded to. I will say, funding, we have worked with Carla. Carla's been very gracious in trying to look for funds to help move forward with this. And I want to make sure I get this right. Are we looking local, local funds we have already allocated that could be used for this? Any other questions?
Mr. Sharp, I appreciate all you do to educate us on this. That always helps. Thank you.
No problem. I appreciate it.
Any other questions?
So when it says, I'm sorry, 16 months of pro support, is that, is that a warranty or is that...
So that's actually within four hours. So if, if the board doesn't mind, let me give you a really quick example of why we, we really look for pro support. We had a SAN, which is a storage unit for all of our district. One specifically, one for elementary schools. We had a hard drive go down within the SAN and pretty much thought we lost everything. At the time, we didn't have any kind of pro support. We ended up getting extremely lucky, finding a company down in Charlotte to be able to recover one of the drives out of the RAID five array. And we were able to actually recover it, but it took us two weeks to recover it. With pro support, if we had it at that time, we would have a four-hour turnaround time. We would have Dell coming in with one of their reps, coming in with the drive, coming in with whatever parts that we need to actually replace and to help. Good question.
Any, any other questions? Hearing none, then I will entertain motions relative to the approval of the quote to purchase a data center hardware and support.
Mr. Chair, I make the motion that we approve the quote to purchase the data hardware and support as presented by Mr. Sharp.
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Abernathy, and a second by Ms. Teague. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the purchase of the data center hardware and support, signify by raising your hand. Unanimous. Thank you. Board members, we have three items for Mr. Moore that we're going to hear about. And then the one on our evaluation instrument. I was just going to see what the board, you want to soldier through or do you want to take a quick break?
Five-minute break would be enough.
Okay. We will take a five-minute break to take care of any issues that need to be taken care of. And then we will try to go ahead and finish these last four items following that five-minute break. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, I was good, I was good until Marty said we might have to have two hours.
I'm saying this, and I think I got the back reset.
Thank you, everyone, for that quick interlude. So we will now resume our meeting, and Mr. Moore has three items for us.
Thank you, Chairman Taylor, members of the board, and Dr. Stover. Our first is approval of telephone system options. This system has been 16 years in the making, the phone system, and over $700,000 invested in that. We have roughly 30 standalone systems that allow us to communicate quickly and effectively between schools. Our provider, our equipment provider, NEC, has licensing and software support through December 30th of, excuse me, December 31st of 2030. So for the next six years, we're going to have licensing, necessary upgrades, and software support. It is costly. It's $174,607.50. It is the best option, in our opinion. It also runs our front entry camera system as well. That's part of our new camera system that allows us to open the door, to be able to know who's accessing the campus. It's very technical, and I'm very thankful to have Lynn Hedsby here to answer any technical questions that you may have, or Robert Hall, our director of construction, and me.
All right, you've heard Mr. Moore's request, questions about that system.
A question about, I think it was Snow Creeks. They have a different system, is that much more expensive?
Mr. Moore, this would be all schools, county office, everybody upgraded to comparable level?
Yes, sir.
$175,000 plus a bunch of numbers on here that haven't seemed to talk about yet.
Right. So the base cost is 174,000. What you have is comparisons there if we were to go to a hosted system. And if you look at the comparison of the two, based over the investment that we've had over the past several years, it is much cheaper for us to go in this direction.
Mr. Moore, and funding for this comes from where?
It will come from capital outlay. We get every year approximately $200,000 from the commission for safety and security, and we feel that this falls within that realm, and we have the funds to be able to purchase that.
Good questions, any others? Hearing none, then I will entertain motions relative to Mr. Moore's request for telephone system option for Kataba County schools.
I'd just like to ask one thing, and it might not be anything to do with this, but it seems like I get a parents' swear message from Kataba Elementary about once a week that their phones are down. Is that anything to do with this, or is that an outside issue?
No, that's our service provider, Spectrum. We've made a, a switch over, and, and it is a long tail
Right.
of the different systems that are in Kataba County. We had two copper wire systems providers, basically. We got away from those because the, the performance was so poor. We went to Spectrum over a couple of years, unfortunately, with new construction. We saw this coming up 16 as well. We were having wires cut fairly consistently, but this is a Spectrum issue. And we've, we've had some growing pains with Spectrum. I'll just, I'll just be truthful.
And I've seen all the construction they're doing down there, and I figured it's probably them cutting lines when they're digging.
Right. That's a Spectrum issue. We still have to have, you know, we're still going to pay a phone bill.
Right.
This is system upgrades, software and support, and licensing.
Thank you, Mr. Suttermeyer.
I think, did you want to add to that?
Thank you, Lynn. All right, so I will entertain a motion relative to Mr. Moore's request for the telephone system option.
Motion to approve.
Second.
As presented.
Thank you, Mr. Abernathy. We have a second, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dr. Barnett, and a second by Dr. Barnett. So motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by raising your hand. Unanimous, thank you.
Thank you. Our next project is for the CTE Sawmill Building at Fred T. Ford High School. When we initially bid this project, unfortunately, the amount of funds available didn't meet that bid number, but in conversations with Neil Construction, we have value engineered this project and are now able to fund the project through renovation funds from Fred T. Ford High School, again, another capital outlay line item. The amount is for $106,000 plus tax to Neil Construction to erect this CTE Sawmill Building at Fred T. Ford High School. And I'll be happy to answer, or Robert, any questions that you may have with regard to this project. And Dr. Eisenhower is here as well.
We got to see where it will be and what they're doing when we toured for it. That was very nice to see. I, I would make the motion that we approve that bid tabulation for the Sawmill Building at Fred T. Ford High School, as Mr. Moore has presented.
My second.
Thank you, Dr. Barnett, for the motion and the second. Is, are there any other questions or discussions? Hearing none, all in favor of the bid tabulation for the Sawmill Building at Fred T. Ford, signify by raising your hand. Unanimous, thank you. And final item from Mr. Moore is the approval of the new milk bid and contract for school nutrition.
Thank you, Chairman Taylor, members of the board. In the spring, Ms. Barrier brought forth several items to bid. One of those was our milk, our liquid milk provider, and unfortunately, the performance of that vendor has not been to standard. Ms. Barrier enacted the appropriate protocols for correction of the issues. Unfortunately, that did not take place, and she began to seek the termination of that agreement, reaching out to the other bidder, who agreed to maintain the price from the spring. And so that is the direction we would like to go for the remainder of the school year for pet dairy, to be able to provide milk for Kataba County schools for the rest of the year. And that agreement is in front of you, and Ms. Barrier is happy to answer any questions that you may have.
We discussed this, I think briefly last time, but thank you for the work, Mr. Moore and Ms. Barrier. Any questions from the board about this? Hearing none, then I will entertain motions.
I make a motion, we approve the milk bid certification.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Suttermeyer and Ms. Teague. That motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approval of the new milk bid and contract for school nutrition, signify by raising your hand. Thank you. And thank you again for the job. Job well done. The final item on our open session agenda this evening is the approval of the draft action steps and framework for the Kataba County Board of Education Self-Evaluation Instrument. And you see a copy of that that was in, that is a hard copy in your packet. There was also an electronic copy sent in the information ahead, and I think this reflects the work that the committee did on this project, starting back in the spring, was it, Dr. Barnett? Yeah, and so we have, we have arrived at this, and I, I think that we have a very good framework for, you know, action steps for this board to be an effective body to go about the work of the people in Kataba County and do it in a, you know, in an efficient and professional manner, and so job well done. So this document is out there, it is drafted, and is, I guess we're ready for, to consider it.
I'd also like to thank Ms. Wetzel for formatting it and making it look so much better and more professional looking. Thank you, Ms. Wetzel, yes.
Thank you.
And to that point, I would make the motion that we approve this. We've now looked at it for several months, and that we approve these action steps and frameworks for the Kataba County Board of Education Self-Evaluation Instrument.
I'll second it.
I'll yield to Ms. Richards.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Abernathy. So second by Ms. Richards. Any further discussion? I do think it's an excellent step in the board being transparent and working toward continuous improvement, so good job there by the committee. All in favor of approval of the draft action steps for the new self-evaluation instrument, signify by raising your hand. Unanimous. That brings us to the end of our open session. Is there a motion for us to go in to close? Is there a motion for us to go into close?
Then are we talking about the maiden roof? Is that after close?
Yes, that's after we come out of close, back into the open session. Thank you for the clarification. Okay, so again, I will entertain a motion to go out of closed, or open session and enter close.
I make a motion that we go out of open session and go into close. My second.
Motion is second. All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Thank you.
We will go into closed session momentarily.
The termination of the project to be engineered, I'll entertain a motion.
How about second?
Motion is second. In discussion, all in favor, put your hand. That is unanimous. I have here addition of approval of action regarding making high school roofing rough. Making high school roofing rough. And added.
That's what that was about.
Oh, okay, so that was it.
Yeah, that was that.
Okay.
I'm sorry, let me talk about that.
I did want to say a contract issue in case you all want to go differently.
Approval of personnel recommendations, you heard them presented, there will be no immediate repeat. And all, can we do the addendum at the same time or they have to be two different? So I'd like to vote we approve CS one and CS two for personnel recommendations. Thank you, Mr. Martin. Thank you, Dr. Bardeck. Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing all in favor of approval of recommendations, addendum five, already in your hand. And here is, uh, unanimous. Hearing no other business.
Motion for adjournment.
I'll entertain Mr. Abernathy's motion. Thank you. It's second.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Abernathy.
Thank you all.
We'll be back in one week.
Correct.